Yeah.
Yeah.
If you really have a problem, council member, bring it over here, I'll hear it for you.
There's one right there for you, Dan.
Well, I'll take two.
Hey, Sam, demonstrate your resistance if you can leave it alone.
I'm not concerned about demonstrating that at all.
Would you like to call a special city council meeting November eighth to order? Please call the rule.
Third round.
Present.
Zingy, here.
Kuz.
Here.
Flora.
Here.
Gage, here. Isom, here. Kaidler.
Here.
Please rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a couple of communications. We have an email that was sent to Jan Lee. We also have a couple items in a packet that we sent. I think everybody got a copy of those for informational purposes. Persons to be heard. Deborah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, Clerk Stinker and Assistant Manager Simpson. My name's Deborah Hayden. I reside at 11011 Victorston Court, and I'm here representing myself tonight. Now then, I understand that you're considering renewing the lease for the hospital. And I would let you know that for the last thirty years, I hate to say how many, I've been counseling businesses on success and how to do planning, how to get their houses in order and reach for the future. And one of the essential things that they need to do is consider options. And so I'm here to ask you to do this process with an RFP to other providers perhaps, and consider what they might have to offer. I'm not here to criticize our current hospital administration or the quality of care we get. I'm here to just say that that's just simple success business practice, is to look around and see what your options are, and define what criteria will make the best solution for the situation at hand. And I'm saying what we might find, I've heard that there are some issues with the billing system. I'm not personally an expert at what's been going on, or some transparency. Those might be criteria that you would put in an RFP as to what kind of transparency an organization is willing to offer, what kind of access or what their history of their billing system and the satisfaction of the people who use their services has been, so that you have records and options to consider. You might very well consider that we have the best system here that we want, that we could get and go ahead with it, but without going through that process, you won't know for sure. And so I'm asking you to have a process like that, and to look for some other providers and see how they stack up. So, thank you for listening.
Any questions for Dan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
So that brings us to Micah Kelly King.
I should.
Lisha.
You should.
Lisha.
It's Lisha Kelly King. I reside at 427 Carlana Lake Road, and I am representing myself, only myself, no one else. This morning, I read in the paper that you were considering the lease for the hospital through the city. And I'm wondering, just as my friend Deborah Hayden has, if you have done due diligence and looked at other options for a management company for the hospital, for another provider for the hospital. I would encourage you, I'm asking you, to please do that, to please look and see if there are other options besides the Peace Health, that possibly there are other providers that would be interested in coming into Ketchikan to see what they can offer our community that needs a hospital. We have a hospital, I'm not saying that... I would encourage you strongly to please put out an RFP for a different provider to see what other providers have to offer our community. Strongly encourage you to do that. If it hasn't been done, I'm kind of wondering why we haven't done that in the past. It's been thirty years. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for listening to me. Thank you for allowing me so few minutes. If you have any questions, I can hang or...
Any questions?
Strongly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak that didn't sign up?
Come on, Ed.
All right. Zian Nun, that brings us down to new business consulting services for the leases in Ketchikan. Medical Center ECG Management Consultant for the presentation, Lacy.
Yes, Mayor Severson. So, back in, I believe it was June, City Manager Amalon received authorization from the council to reach out to ECG Management Services while in advance of the expiration of the lease agreement that we have in place for operation of Ketchikan Medical Center by Peace Health. I believe it was actually our financial director, Bob Newell, who was in contact with ECG first, who I think has a good history in Alaska in dealing with similar sized hospitals around the Northwest. So at this point, this is sort of an introduction to ECG, to some of the services that they might provide the city of Ketchikan as we try to navigate what a future lease with Peace Health could look like. Again, we're well ahead of schedule. There's a number of different options that I think ECG can present to us, and certainly tonight, they're interested to hear more from the council on what specifically you're looking for in a new lease for operation of the hospital. So I'm actually going to introduce Dan Rolino and Kevin Kennedy. We were able to actually go on a tour this morning of the hospital, which was really wonderful. We spent about an hour and a half there, so they were able to see the older parts of the hospital, the historic parts, as well as the new wing. We got to go in one of the operating rooms. So they've seen the gamut of what the hospital has looked like, what it looks like now, how the building is reflective of the services that are being rendered. We met some of the staff. So they're getting a pretty good overview of the hospital as a facility, and also some of the ins and outs of Peace Health as an operator. They asked some good questions, received some good answers from Dr. Peter Rice, but are certainly, I think, just scratching the surface and will be eager to learn more should the council choose to move forward with them in navigating a lease. They have a presentation, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if it wouldn't be good with... I get the impression some people may not understand why we're doing this and the timeframes, and so I think it would be good to take a minute or two and you or Lacy or somebody just explain why we're going through this process.
So first of all, we have a lease in place, and we have been dealing with Peace Health on a number of different issues. And at one time, we looked back to the lease to see if there was anything in it that gave us an opportunity to promote some of the wishes of the council. And then we realized that it was probably lacking in a lot of different areas. And the lease is due in 2023, I believe.
Yes.
And so it was suggested and we decided to start working on it early on and understand the process and see where we're at with it. And basically, you know, the biggest part of it is just a renter and a tenor type thing. You know, it's a lease agreement for the use of the property, but there are other things that could play into that. So we're going to try to refine that and find out where we are. And that doesn't bar as if people have suggested there's been a conversation about whether or whether or not we do an RFP. But I think the first thing we have to do is understand exactly what we have. And then when you think about an RFP, it's going to take some expertise to decide how you write that and what exactly it's going to cover. And then you have to also consider the transition period if you were going to go from one provider to the next, how it all... So it's a very, very complicated issue that you can't just jump into, but that's why we have experts here today to start leading us down that path. That's about where we're at. Lacy, anything to add to that?
No, I don't.
Bob? All right, so, gentlemen.
All right. So we do have a presentation. First of all, I'd just like to thank you for inviting us up and for engaging in this discussion, because I think it's not often that we have, you know, clients that are five years ahead of the game. So, and I would tell you that if we're involved, the negotiation wouldn't last five years, I promise. But having said that, I think, you know, the comments that we've heard tonight, knowing what you want, setting the criteria for what you need, those are all very, very salient points and stuff that we bring up a lot in these kinds of projects. So without going too far, I'd just like to introduce you to who we are, and then Kevin will talk about some of our experience in general in Alaska in particular, if that works. So, I don't know, I don't want to...
Don't want to blind me yet?
I don't want to blind you, so I don't know how we do this. I'm hoping that this mouse will work from here, if not all.
It should, but you need to... Yeah, because we want to...
Oh, well, let's see if it works.
Um, bringing the budget...
Next year's budget. Oh, there it reads.
It's coming.
Look at that. It's warming up, Danny.
That proposal for... Let me remember, executive sessions and presentations. The last one, four presentations in the meeting.
Tori Dickens said it.
That works, that's good enough. Oh, look at that. That's working. All right, so as I said, I'm going to talk about the overview of who we are. And by the way, any questions during this, bring them up. We don't need to wait till the end or any of that kind of thing. We like to have discussions and back and forth. So, ECG is a provider-related consulting firm. This is really all we do. Our clients are various providers throughout the nation. We have almost 220 consultants. We have ten offices nationwide, but we started in Seattle, and we've always done a lot of work in the Northwest, a fair amount of work in Alaska. And I think we feel that we know the area very well. We specialize, though, in not doing cookie cutter solutions, but really working the problem to the point that it's an implementable solution. And in these kinds of engagements, and Kevin will talk more about them specifically, but you have to know yourself, you have to know what you want and need, and you have to know who's on the other side of the table. What is their situation? Where do you look at them and say, can they improve in what they do? Are there other options that might be better? If this is the option we choose to go with, how do we craft it so that it meets the needs of the council, meets the needs of the community? And that's what we say when we have implementable solutions. We are not one that does strategies or crafts arrangements that are elegant on paper, but won't really work in this situation. We pride ourselves on making sure it will work for you. As you can see, we've partnered with more than 2,400 clients. That, what's not up here is that we've been around for forty-five years. And in doing so, we've worked with clients throughout the nation and on projects, I don't know the number of projects we've done, Kevin, but it's several, several thousand. So what we do is not just these kinds of projects. I say that because I think we need to know the business of healthcare. We do not typically do clinical operations in terms of looking at, you know, clinically related stuff. We don't employ many MDs. We do employ a few, but basically, these are our four areas. We look at strategy, and as you can see underneath strategy, strategy for the enterprise, strategy within service lines, physician strategy and alignment, the kinds of things that you see that relate to the kind of turbulent nature of healthcare, all these different kinds of relationships. And mergers, acquisitions and partnerships are part of that. Finance, we hit the numbers hard. One of the things that we would want to know in this kind of a consultation would be, what, how do we craft this relationship financially? We know that right now, it's essentially a dollar a year, and they are tasked with running the operations of the hospital. We would want to know more about that. We would want to know if either party was interested in mutual incentives. We would want to know in terms of contributions for future development of the medical services. Right now, it seems to be very facility-based versus operations-based. Is that the right mix? So we look at that, we model these things out as to how we can come up with a, craft a, an arrangement that will last for the next thirty years. Operationally, we look at the way things flow. Just clearly, that's what we're interested in. And as you can see, one of those things, and I've heard comments about billing, but that's that last one, revenue cycle optimization, that means efficient billing. And we have people that that's all they do. And so we know what works and what doesn't work. And if that's a pain point for you, we need to understand why, and we need to understand how that becomes an accountable part of the contract, which it doesn't sound like it is today. Finally, on technology, we do a lot of system optimization, a lot of system acquisition, that kind of thing. I don't think it's that germane to what we're talking about in this particular thrust, but just know that we look a lot at how to utilize technologies, especially, you know, when you get into remote communities, how do you access, how do those people access you? How do you communicate with bigger medical centers? Now, I will say that Peace Health has, you know, done a good job in terms of having Epic as its platform and having that platform throughout its system, which makes it easier to communicate. But we just are, we're just well-versed in all the things it takes to run a medical center. So in looking at that one area of expertise that is most pertinent to you, our M&amp;A Advisory Services, you can see that we do a lot of transactions, the planning and coordination of those transactions. We look at the structure of those transactions. Most, most particular is not only the structure of the deal in terms of the finances and that kind of thing, but the governance. How does the deal get governed once you've signed on the dotted line? By governed, I mean, when do the parties get together? What do they talk about? Where's the authorities and accountabilities within that governance? Do you have any say in what goes on? And if so, what? What are the areas of your emphasis, your leverage, if you will? So you can see, I'm not going to go through all these, but we look at developing the agreements that lead to that relationship, LOIs, definitive agreements, RFPs, all those kinds of things that lead to the agreement, as I said, that should last for another thirty years. And we look toward, is this something that will endure the test of time? And for that, it's got to have those components in it. So just to talk about this particular vein of what we've done, we have, as it says, in the past five years, we've done almost 400 engagements with over 200 clients across the nation. The thing that we're very, very proud of is, on the left-hand side, you can see that there's an organization that rates consulting firms, and they do it by survey. They do it by survey of the nation's hospitals and healthcare systems. And this year, we were named the best-in-class for management consulting through their surveys and their ranking system. We, that's because our clients, I think, feel like we're committed to solving their problems. And I'm very, very proud of that. I've personally been around for thirty-five of those forty-five years and was former managing partner of the organization. And I can tell you that that's just, it's just in our DNA. We just internalize your problems and create solutions, as I said, that work for you. So you can see that we've worked for a lot of the players that surround you, Providence, Virginia Mason, CHI Franciscan is down in Seattle in the Northwest. So we know a lot of these players very, very well. And we've worked, in the past, we've worked with Peace Health as well. So we know what they're about. Our local experience up here, I think, is where I'm going to turn it over to Kevin and start to talk about how this market is something that we know and we think we have a fair understanding of how it works.
Thanks, Dan. I also want to reiterate my thanks to the council, the members of city management for having us up here. It's been a great day, we've learned a lot. I look forward to learning more about the situation. So like Dan said, we were founded in Seattle, and it's still, I believe, our largest office in terms of number of consultants. And so because we're in the Northwest, we're often asked to do work in Alaska. Right, it's a fairly short plane flight. It's pleasantly short this morning, only about an hour and forty minutes in the air with plenty of non-stops. So it was not a bad commute at all compared to some of the work we've done across the country. But because of our relative proximity to Alaska, we have often been asked to come up here and do work. And so what I tell junior consultants who are maybe coming to Alaska for the first time is that, first of all, a lot of what you've learned about healthcare in the lower forty-eight, leave it back there, okay? Because Alaska is different in many ways. You know, it can be more difficult to recruit physicians, for example. The way your Medicaid reimbursement is structured is very different than anyone else. And the competitive dynamics are different because many of the communities are isolated. You don't have road networks to get around because of the presence of, you know, some large tribal health organizations, for example. So there are lots of nuances in working in Alaska that we've been able to pick up through the work that we've done in the state over many years. I don't have quite Dan's level of seniority. I've only been with the company for twenty-eight years, but that's still a long time. And so hopefully you recognize some of the logos and some of the organizations that are up there. Because when you've worked with that many organizations in a geographic area, you do get familiar with their capabilities. Also, you know, Dan showed the slide of some of the other clients that we've worked with, but when you think about the universe of what's possible for you guys up here, we know Peace Health very well. We've done work at virtually all of their institutions at one time or another. They've had a fair amount of senior-level management turnover at the very top of the organization, so we don't know them honestly as well as we used to, because they have been going through the transition. But I think that, you know, we have a lot of knowledge of what their capabilities are, how they've been performing, how they make decisions, and what's important to them. Also, same level of knowledge, if not more, with, you know, organizations like Providence that we've worked for. We've done some work for Search as well. And so we do understand the landscapes and some of the capabilities, strengths and weaknesses of some of the major players who are out there, should that come into play. I want to talk about two we've done, two projects we've done that I was personally involved with over the last few years. The Bartlett one, actually, I may be stretching it there, it's actually more than just a few years ago. But we were asked by Bartlett to come in and evaluate their management contract that they had with Quorum. And this one actually may go back like eight years. But it was my introduction to Juno. And we came in and we talked to a lot of stakeholders around, you know, how happy are you with the work that Quorum is doing? We worked with city council members, we worked with members of the management team and members of the hospital board to assess what was going to be important in a management partnership. That board did elect to go out and explore other options beyond what Quorum could provide. We ran an RFP process, essentially. They received a number, they did receive some interest. The Peace Health actually expressed strong interest. Two for-profit management companies expressed interest, and Quorum also expressed some interest. Their decision at the time was to not enter into any new management contract, but to terminate the Quorum relationship and go out and bring everything in-house. And we helped facilitate that process. And certainly, you know, the needs of the community, what the board wanted to do ended up being paramount in making that decision, but a pretty similar engagement to what you're asking us to do here with the lease. Also, more recently, we were engaged jointly by Sitka Community Hospital and by Search up in Sitka to explore what a combined vision of healthcare in the future could look like in that community. As you probably know, you know, a city that, with a population of about nine thousand people, should probably not have two hospitals, right? And they have two hospitals. The Search Hospital was doing fairly well. They have a unique reimbursement mechanism that enables them to be successful under almost any circumstance. Sitka Community Hospital did not have that and was costing the city an awful lot of money. So we were engaged to help the two explore what might healthcare look like in the future if we were a combined organization. There was broad agreement that the two hospitals did not make sense. There was not broad agreement on exactly how to bring those organizations together. So we were proud of the work that we did in terms of defining what the right structure would look like. The city council at the time of lease was having a hard time sort of making the decision that they should combine their community hospital with Search, and they essentially pulled back. They revisited that decision, and you've probably heard that recently they did decide to proceed with essentially the structure that we had recommended. But it took a while. And, you know, change is hard, and change can take a while. And sometimes it takes a community a while to get used to, you know, a new environment. I think that was definitely the case up in Sitka.
Can you, sorry, can you explain how the structure was with Search that made it more successful?
Sure. Well, Search has, you know, they get reimbursed through the tribal consortium mechanism, and so they have cost-based reimbursement, like you guys do for your hospital, right? They have that, but they also have cost-based reimbursement for outpatient visits. And so they can make money off of things that most organizations cannot make money off of. And also too, I mean, I know that the state of Alaska and its budget situation has made, you know, subsidizing these smaller hospitals more and more difficult. Search doesn't have that problem. Most of their subsidy stream comes from the federal government and isn't related to the state. So I'd say we, certainly, we learned a ton from that. You know, we learned more about reimbursement and how it works in Alaska. We learned a lot about tribal health and the consortiums and how their reimbursement works. And also learned a lot about the dynamics of communities, you know, like Sitka. Some of those dynamics probably exist here, too. I'd say that the folks at Sitka are every bit as passionate about healthcare as the folks who are here. And so we sit in rooms a lot like this and listen to people, you know, really pour their heart out about the things that were important to them in healthcare. And when we do this work, it's absolutely critical that we listen to the community, we listen to the leaders, we understand what's really important. I do think because you have an existing relationship that is, you know, by most accounts, is functioning reasonably well, that there's an opportunity here to take an arrangement that may be good and to turn it into something that's really great. I do think one of the most important decisions this group will have to make is, you know, do we want to go out and explore broader partnership opportunities? Or do we want to limit the scope of what we're doing to building on the Peace Health arrangement? So I appreciate the comments that the folks in the gallery made.
I have a quick question. So when, if Search, which has funding opportunities that are different than non-native, and they combine their operations, were they able to bring economies to the existing operations and lower actual healthcare costs, expand services? Were these some of the outcomes of that?
Yes, they were. In fact, one of the things that Search is bringing to Sitka is that with this combination, they believe they'll be able to afford to build a brand-new hospital. So they have, you know, economically, they're a very sound organization that's well-capitalized. And like I said before, they can avail themselves of financial opportunities that other organizations have a hard time with.
And that benefits everyone across the board?
Correct. Before we move on, any questions about the specific engagements that we worked on?
Did, by chance, did Bartlett's hospital, one of their requirements in their lease, did it have to do with the, because they also have a treatment, a detox center? Was that part of their agreement or... Was that part of their agreement or?
Bartlett's original structure was not quite like yours. It was not a hospital lease. It was simply a management contract. So the city always owned the assets and the hospital itself and they had simply outsourced the management team and, and support services to, to Quorum. So honestly, I don't recall whether they had a detox center that was part of that, but I believe it would have been covered by the management contract.
Okay.
So Dan did a pretty good job of introducing us. But like I said, we've both been doing this for, for twenty-five years or more. I've done many projects like this in similar settings and we like to think that we know what we're doing. So if there's any questions about our background or about the company, happy to entertain those. Just a little bit of how we work on this slide and then we'll, we'll wrap up our presentation. You know, a lot of times we're asked to consider a really broad array of strategies. And so here's sort of the spectrum that we look at. There are, there's sort of light affiliation options that can involve something as similar, as simple as, you know, clinical rotations, as agreements to accept each other's patients, things like that, all the way over to a decision to, to sell your hospital to somebody else and get, essentially get out of the healthcare business with lots of nuances in between, okay? Right now, you guys have a, you have a lease agreement that's implied that that is a management services agreement as well, but that's not necessarily the only thing that you should be thinking about. And one of the things that we would bring, I think, is an open mind in terms of things that might work better. What you have now is, it's not a bad strategy at all. In fact, it's very typical of, of government-owned hospitals that there are restrictions on selling the assets, that sort of thing. So a leaseback is not necessarily a bad structure. But I think one of the things that we will bring is, we're, we're good listeners. And so we want to understand what's not working and make sure, like Dan said, that there's accountability for those things that are important to the community that's built into a contract. But right now, what we're understanding is that contract is a little loose, it's a little vague. Even today, when we were during our tour, I asked several questions around like, how do you decide who pays for this or who's on the hook for that? And the answers weren't quite as crisp and clear as they probably should be. If we're engaged to do this, you will have a crisp and clear contract with clear accountabilities, the needs of the community will be reflected in that contract.
With teeth, with enforcement.
With teeth. And, you know, one of the things we're going to have to think about too is, like, like Dan said, we're, we're very good at finance and so we need to understand how the hospital's doing, right? You, a lot of, a lot of smaller towns, smaller cities in Alaska have to subsidize their hospital to keep them going. And we want to understand exactly how the money's going back and forth. We know that you, with the generous support of the community, recently invested fifty or sixty million dollars in that facility. It shows, the facility's beautiful. Compared to other hospitals I've been to in communities this size, it seems like you're very fortunate to have such a beautiful and well-equipped facility. So we don't want to lose what you have. But we do need to understand how Peace Health is doing running the hospital. Is the dollar a year, is that fair? Is that the right number?
Twelve dollars a year.
Twelve dollars a year, okay. So it could be twelve times higher than I thought. Right, it could be worse, I guess. But there's not much there. And is, is that right? I mean, is that the right level of financial commitment that, for Peace Health to make to this community in exchange for what they're doing? We'll, we'll explore that and we'll have opinions on that.
So I have a question in regards to agreements and partnerships. So one of the concerns I would have is we would at some point become considered a business associate and may have some liabilities under HIPAA or something else. And I'd like to stay out of that as much as I, as I can. It's not like we want to run the hospital, but we need to make sure that our, our assets are being used to the advantage of the, the members here in the community and their healthcare needs.
Right. That makes a lot of sense. I mean, right now, it's been very much wrong-sense relationship, right? Your building, your asset, they run it, they have all the risk, all the liability, all the rewards that, that come from that. Is, is that the right model for you guys? And again, not a bad model. It seems like the contract could use, I haven't even reviewed the contract, okay? But it seems like, from what I've learned today, it could use more language around accountability and making sure that Peace Health is really addressing the needs of, of the community. And there are ways to do that. We have experience in building incentives and building governance structures, ensuring that the communication is flowing so that if things aren't going well, you guys have a, a chance to, to work with Peace Health to resolve those issues.
The question, that one, when you brought up the, how do we know or know the dealings or the workings of the hospital? How do we keep in contact? What it's like, so what are most, how is that usually done and other?
Well, we need to think about, about right governance and decision-making structure around the contract and contracts can, can empower that. And so I, I would envision some sort of a, a shared council or shared committee that meets on a regularly scheduled basis, that looks at the performance of the contract according to the terms that are, again, important to this, this body and to the community, looks at the financial performance of the hospital according to metrics that are predefined, identifies issues and if there are issues, charts a course to resolve them.
So like a board?
Like a board. Honestly, you would probably not be, it would not be a fiduciary board, but it would be an advisory board that had teeth to act through the terms of the contract.
Just to add, I mean, typically it would be like called a joint operating committee or something. That's, it's management-focused, it's not, you know, about big strategies. But the, the thing I wanted to emphasize is that for, for most relationships, if not all relationships, you have certain metrics to the relationship that is required, right? I mean, let's just take the building example. There, there are easily published metrics about performance, right? And so you have to define, what are the, what we call KPIs, the key performance indicators that you want to hold your relationship accountable by? And, but what if they're not met? So happens, you know, is there some sort of a, a process that would have, you know, a complaint against those things not met, a curing period for solving it, penalties potentially for not, for, for under or non-performance? You know, things that could be the standard contract components for most other kinds of arrangements with each other, but are not, from what we understand, inherently or earned right now. So who's the body that talks with them about how to solve the building issue or to get to gauge their responsiveness? Right now, from what we understand, there is not that kind of what we would call government body.
So Dan, I think we do have representation on the hospital advisory board. And so is this going to be a complete type of committee outside of the advisory board or is it something that can be set up within the current structure of the hospital to add another committee to that advisory board?
Well, that's to be determined, just from how it's set up. But I, you know, I, just to be blunt, I don't think one seat in the hospital with advisory boards enough. And I, I mean, it's, it's great for understanding what's going on, to get, to get a more of a, you know, an inside view of what they're dealing with on a month-to-month basis. But it is not a body that can speak to your agreement and speak to your specific issues. That typically would be some sort of management committee, if you will, where you have two or three people that are representing you. And, you know, just to take, you know, Bob as an example, finance director, he understands the financial needs of the community as they relate to this agreement. Somebody like that, perhaps, you know, the city manager or assistant city manager, people like that, maybe a representative from the board. I'm making this up as I go walking by the way. And, and then they've got people that are, are their hospital management team and we're, we're talking about this. It's not political, it's, it's operational. How come, what's the problem here? What's your, what's your cure? How are you going to go about this? Just accountability, one-on-one.
So I have a quick question. So you already have a, you've had a, a business relationship with Peace Health before. So how does that affect going forward entering into a business relationship with us when we're looking at things that are, you know, probably not out there for general knowledge? I mean, do they approach you for information or general information about this kind of a process or what, what happens there and what is, how do you handle that?
Yeah, we have a, we have a conflict of interest, honestly, that there are, there are some assignments that we simply, you know, will not do. And that includes we will not do a strategy work for competitors in the same market, for example. So while we're engaged with you, if Peace Health calls us and says, can you help us with our oncology program in Ketchikan, we're going to say no. I mean, so those things are, are probably pretty, pretty obvious. But to my knowledge, we are not, at right now, doing any work for Peace Health. And it's, it's been a little while. Like I said, they've had some, some turnover at the top and we haven't done any work with them lately. I will tell you that when you, when you hire us, you're getting our full and complete effort to represent your interests. And, you know, I don't know if the people that we've been working with would even recognize my name or Dan's name. They might. We do have some history with them, but it's history. It's, it's in the past. Sometimes though, when we're doing this work, I, I've definitely been involved in situations where even in an adversarial situation, they'd rather be working with ECG than with someone else because they know that we're reasonable and that what we come up with will be an implementable solution and that we're not going to come up with something crazy. So even in an adversarial situation, sometimes people are glad we're sitting with us.
You see, I think that's an important point. Our job, if we were hired by you, our job's not to win. Our job is to craft a solution that's going to work for both parties for a long time. And it may be that Peace Health is that party, it may not be that Peace Health. You know, there's some other party that, that another solution's possible. That's up to you to decide if you want to go outside, look at that as, as has been suggested. But at the end of the day, I think the reason that a lot of our, a lot of the people sitting across the table from us respect what we do is because we're trying to find the right solution for the situation. So, you know, we're objective, we're analytical, we're tough in terms of pointing out things that might be difficult for them to hear, but we're not, you know, we're not incendiary. We're trying to find things that are factual, that are problematic. I mean, they've got a building problem, plain and simple. If, if, if that negotiation happens with them, there's no way you sign an agreement that doesn't address that issue. Just don't, okay? And, and, you know, another thing that you've got to determine is we're five years early. So if, as I said, you determine they're the right partner for the long term, where's their incentive to renegotiate this thing out and impose tougher conditions? So what, what, on the other side, what do they want and what are you willing to give? Do they want a longer agreement? Do they want some things that they don't feel they have now? That needs to be fleshed out. We need to understand that playing field. So, you know, I don't mean to be dispassionate about it, but it's, it's just the way these things go. You've just got to lay it out and we craft a solution with you guys and we figure out, you know, what are, what are your walkaway points? What are things you have to have? What are things that are negotiable? You know, and, and in the process, we're not, we're, we're facilitating that, but we're recommending what we think are the right things to emphasize, the right things that you've got to have in the contract. But it's, you know, it just is a, sort of a rhythm that you get to in these negotiations.
So are we at the point now where we're through with the formal presentation in regards to the introduction? So I think the next step?
This is our last slide, yeah.
All right. So I think the next step would be to move on into our planned executive session to talk about actual strategies. So before we take a motion in regards to that, I'd ask Lacy to give us a, an update that she has in regards to bag freed out of the [inaudible].
Thank you. Someone want to get the, the light in the back?
Actually, it's a [inaudible].
Yeah, I don't think I want to. Thank you, Mayor Severson. I did just want to give an update to the council regarding electrical generation. Following last Friday's electrical outage that was community-wide from a bird strike, the third generator at the Bailey Power Plant went down with a sort of catastrophic failure. It blew a cylinder. It might have more extensive damage. Right now, the Bailey Powerhouse mechanics are looking into it, but they, at this point, they're confident that it can be resurrected. It's not a, a lost hope, but we are without that generator for, for probably the next several weeks. Luckily, it's raining, lake levels are going up, the forecast looks good. So we're back on hydro. We went back on hydro from Swan and our local hydro a little bit earlier than planned on Friday. So we're in good shape right now, but I just did want to apprise you of what's going on with that third generator. With regard to the contingency diesels that are in order, they have actually hit the barge in Seattle. So they will be here for our retrieval on Monday. Again, it's going, probably going to take about two or three weeks to get them up and running, but that is in the works in case our, our lovely rain decides to slow down or if our, if, yeah, if it starts to snow, the lake levels start to, to drop, freeze all of those, all of those, yes, all of those issues that could make for a potentially difficult situation for generation, so.
So Lacy, I, you know, just as a further update, I understand that bag one seems to be an alignment issue and they'll get that back. They're working on that presently?
They are working on that, on that presently. It is an alignment issue. I believe the entire shaft was bent during that, that incident. So there's still some more work that needs to be done on that. So it's, it's honestly, it's, it's a matter of balancing out what is the most immediate need with being short-staffed, balancing out the, the failures of different generators, working on different regulatory projects for our dams. So it's, it's a major balancing act. So again, hats off to the powerhouse mechanics. They're doing a wonderful, wonderful job under less than ideal circumstances right now.
And then we have a fuel issue with bag two that probably about resolved.
Yes, the, again, the fun never stops. It's just one, one incident after another.
But I just, in regards to the fact that we have these diesels that are fairly old and when you run them twenty-four seven, even though they're de-rated, there's, the, the potential for failure is, is always, always seem to be there with those things. Long-term, we probably need to start planning for what we're going to do with the next step. But I appreciate the report, of course. I appreciate everything the employees are doing to keep, keep us looking. Thank them, boys. Okay, so that brings us on into, let's go through mayor and council comments. Dick?
I'm on your arm.
You have me?
Not at this time.
Sam?
Nothing.
Judy?
Nothing, really.
Hey?
Of course. We seem to have had an awful lot of bird strikes in the last couple of months. What's up with that?
Turkey doing something.
And, and, and no, it's not like the old days where they kept a frozen eagle and you sit, sitting in it and you threw it out and said, "Up eagle." I, I believe these were actually happened, there was a crow involved in one of them, there was a, a raven. I, I realize we have miles of, of unguarded lions here, but, you know, it just seems like there's been an outbreak of suicidal [inaudible].
An outbreak.
I'm not sure fishing game helped us with this at all, but maybe there's something.
They're trying to get warm.
Maybe, maybe they're, maybe they're mags, we're not allowing people to feed them anymore. I don't know what the, I don't know what the problem is, but.
Mark?
I'm on your arm.
Thank you. So that brings us down to executive session, item seven A. Do I have a motion?
Your honor.
Yes.
Move the city council declare that consistent with the city manager's report dated October thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, it is in the best interest of the city council to discuss negotiation of a lease between the city and Peace Health related to renewal of the hospital lease in executive session in accordance with KMC two oh four, oh two five, A one and A three, which includes the need to discuss subjects, the knowledge of which could have an immediate adverse impact on the finances of the city and to receive legal advice within the attorney-client privilege.
Second. Dan moving second. Screen that, now, if we please call the board.
Kuyfer?
Sure.
Eisen?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Forham?
Yes.
Tuth?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Ferserun?
Aye.
So we'll move into, we set aside, let's move in the executive session. We'll have about a five minutes left. We have We got something set up in there. We have, we don't have Lacy yet either.
Nice round here.
Okay, we are, the mics are on, and we're live. All right. Come back to order. Commit an executive session, and as in the executive session motion, there's also another motion in regards to moving forward.
Your honor. I move the city council authorize the city manager and city finance director to negotiate a professional services agreement with ECG Management Consultants to assist the city with negotiations of an agreement with Peace Health, Health, for lease of the Ketchikan Medical Center facilities. Set agreement to be submitted to the city council for formal consideration and approval.
Second. Ben in, moving in second.
So does that, though, limit us to simply talking about a new lease with Peace Health?
I think you should amend it.
Yeah, I think we need to figure out some way that, because that's.
With the, something like, with the possible scope in regards to an RFP.
Yeah.
Second.
I can't make that.
David, go. I, I just, I just do. Make it something.
So you want to add the?
We're going on the amendment, and if the next one passes, carry the motion, do we want to do it that way, or do you want to just go back?
Dispositive.
Okay, so should we do a local just on adding the, then, okay.
Okay, yes.
All right, so the motion to add the RFP factor to motion number two is pretty much what.
Your, your, your honor.
Yes.
If, if I could just ask, I, I, I think, I think the intent is to do a broad, a broad, so, you know, so if we identify it as an RFP, does that limit us? I, I, I would like to amend the language that reflects that we have a, a broad spectrum rather than just an RFP or IFP, whatever acronym you wanted to use, it depends. So if there's, anybody has any suggestions on language?
Here comes the jury.
What do you have, Mitch?
Well, me, my take sort of on the, on the council's desire is that the proposed professional service agreement could include tasks not only associated with negotiating a lease, but for options for the, the future use of the hospital and medical care services in the community.
I saw a move.
Okay, so, Dave, your motion was on the table, is that what you would like?
Yes, absolutely.
And I saw a second.
Okay, and, all right, so the vote we're going to take is to approve the amendment, and then we'll go back to the main motion.
It'll repeat the amendment.
What, what makes the?
Mitch?
Look at broader perspective.
A broader perspective is.
Not limiting.
Not limiting to a lease or RFP or whatever.
One and two. Other options. Okay. Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Eisen?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
That passes, that brings us back to.
The main, the main motion has amended.
Has amended.
And.
Everybody understand what's the main motion was? Okay?
So I think we need to.
Restate it.
Which was Flora and Bergeron?
Flora and Bergeron.
Was the amendment, the main motion was?
Flora and Bergeron.
Oh.
Okay, your honor.
We'd like to keep that.
Okay.
We got it on tape here, so.
When we read it, has it's amended? Read it. I want to hear what we said.
Well, it.
So I move the city council authorize the city manager and the city finance director to negotiate a professional service agreement with ECG Management Consultants to assist the city with negotiation of agreement with Peace Health for the lease of the Ketchikan Medical Center facility, an agreement to submit to the city council for formal consideration and approval, with the added amendment in regards to not limiting to just the lease agreement, but to.
Include future options with, to an RFP.
Including, but not.
And I will get that language from you tomorrow. How's that? For the amendment.
You have it on tape.
Ah, okay.
Since the manager will tell you that it's a frequent occurrence with me is, we should have written that down, because five minutes later, I can't remember what it was.
I, okay.
So if you.
That's a take point.
You got the right guy.
Possible to that, Bill.
If you, if you reflect.
Well, I'll, I'll listen to it, and pretty much so was to include an RFP as well as future options.
So we have the ability to.
To, that way you guys can do pretty much.
It's, it's, it's.
You will see the scope of work when you approve it.
Right. As long as they understood. Kuz? Are, are you, this is the main motion as amended.
Yeah, yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Eisen?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Zingy?
Yes.
That will be that. I believe that was the last item on the agenda, so what is the next one?
Let's move to the general. Point of order, your honor, I didn't hear the second.
Second.
The executive order.
Acclamation, by acclamation.